This is the Diamond Regional School Committee meeting for February 13, 2025, roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yeah.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
According to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting. A member of the public who wishes to record the meeting must first notify the chair and must comply with the requirements regarding audio or video equipment established by the chair not interfering with the meeting. Any recording?
I don't believe so. I have to log out of the meeting, but just give me one quick second.
Recording in progress.
Um, no one is recording.
Nobody. Okay.
While you're leaking, to the United States of America, and into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The motion to approve the January 9, 2025, that's a second. All in favor? I roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan? Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
One point four, we have the students report.
Everybody, my name is Paul River student, I'm a junior at York Charms in New York shop. When I graduate, I intend to pursue electronics at college, like through electrical engineering. So last Tuesday, I attended the Southeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Councils conference on February 4. I got to share my survey strategy with other schools in the workshops, and I made a few new friends also. Um, our update on the launches right now is that we've increased variety in daily offerings. There's a consistent availability of wraps throughout launch periods, continuation of our popular charcuterie trays, and introduction of, introduction of new items and alternatives this month, such as Philly cheesesteak, rodeo burger, and meatball sub. I also saw chicken soup, that sounds pretty good. Um, the, the new Bengals build excellence hallway is already improving student morale as students get to see evidence that their hard work is recognized. We will continue to make Diamond a school where students feel celebrated. Um, I have some pictures of it here, I'm not sure if you all have that, but you can see it there and also in the school building. And then after reaching outside the school's fundraiser inspiration, not getting any responses, um, I'm going to use my resources as a member of the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives to come up with some ideas, so. Um, one person said they did a crumble fundraiser, I don't really know the details on that, but I'd love to find out because I know a lot of students are in school really like crumble. And for the future, I would love to bring back the trade fair as well, because it allows students to navigate and engineering problem on their own. And it produces tangible evidence that they did something to be proud of, and we can bring our community together to showcase our abilities as young students by inviting industry professionals to check out our work and sponsor the event. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have one question. You wrote back something that was near and dear to my heart when I was here a few years ago. The trade fair, what was, what was the trigger for that? You brought up the trade, trade fair that you mentioned.
I remember, but also just going along with like, like the, the build excellence hallway and like seeing students recognize themselves as being somebody who is on that wall, like I think that is a part of it, and then also using teamwork because like for example, electronics, we don't really do group projects, and I would love to learn how to work as a team better as well. I think a trade fair might allow them to have some collaboration between students. I know some other shops do that a little bit easier, but that's my kind of thought.
I like, I like the concept because it was very big around here, um, that when we did have it, so. I would say, thank you for saying something about that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Helena, do we have anybody to sign up?
We do not.
Moving on to three point one, all the matters, MSBA school committee, uh, building committee. Mr. DiBiaseu, want to give a report?
Yeah.
Mr. DiBiaseu, are you there? I don't think he is.
Awesome.
Yeah, all right, Brian. Yeah, Mr. Chairman and the other committee members, at the last school building, uh, committee meeting, uh, there was a lively discussion about the difference of something that we were discussing between a PCO and a PCCO. Suffolk Colliers and KBA did a great job explaining where the buckets of money are coming from, and how they can, the money's already allocated, and how certain things are now being taken out of those core buckets that were allocated way back when when the project began, and are now being spent to bring in the contract. Uh, we did approve that night quite a bit of money, uh, and it was all money that we already had in place. So this is not new money, it's not going back to the periods and asking for any money. It's just now that the project, that portion of the project has come up. This is now the time to say, we need this amount of money to work on that. And thus, we got a better understanding of change orders, not adding money to the project at all, but utilizing the money we have on here. That was mostly the substance of it.
Okay.
They did a good job. They did a very good job. Mr. DiBiaseu is back.
He's back?
Yeah.
Mr. DiBiaseu, you need to add anything to that, or?
Here. No, um, but Brian, um, I'm going to try to get ahold of you tomorrow because I, I've been watching all the PCOs coming in, and I wanted to talk to you about a couple of them that I have a couple of questions on.
Good.
All right.
Okay, moving on, we have, um, your change order, PCCO number zero zero two. Recommendation was to reaffirm the PCCO number two for a total amount of seventy-six thousand fourteen fifty-eight. Need a motion to approve. Okay, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yeah.
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
I remember twice, yes.
Okay, then we need the organization to sign PCCOs approved by the school building committee. Recommendation is to authorize Mr. Bentley and Mr. Kitchen to sign PCCOs approved by the school building committee. Need a motion to approve?
To approve.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan? Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Do we have any other updates on the project?
The updates that you'd be looking for, Mr. Jennings, are contained in some of the information that you have. Including a construction update, which is this brochure that is colored, uh, and that brings you pictures of completed and projected work that is coming up very sharply.
What, I need to? Yeah, or? Yes.
Moving on to the MSBA project expenditures, Mr. Kitchen. The expenditures for this month for January thirty first, I'll use this word, invoice for a hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars thirty cents. BPA, January is one hundred and fifteen thousand five thirty-seven. Then from Suffolk, I contract seven million three hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars twenty cents. All right, I need a motion to approve the project expenditures as submitted. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan? Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to three point one, all the matters, the personnel, Mr. Bentley?
Yes, for the committee's information, that there have been appointments of two ESL power professionals, Christopher Beard and Ida Leon Moniz, uh, both appointed as ESL professionals, uh, power professionals. They are working specifically with English language awareness and specific shops, uh, for those students who have little bit probably understand English and helps them better understand the technical aspects of what's going on inside the shops. Uh, they're a good addition to our, our school. We're also, as you see, three of them there, Madison Pereira, carpeting cabinet making, she was to that program. She's a member of the class of 2024, uh, she's currently employed in carpeting trade where she builds custom windows and doors. Ms. Pereira is seeking an acquaintance to the advisory board as a business and industry member. Second one is Rachel Resendes, carpeting cabinet making also. She's working in the field for seventeen plus years, she has experience as an unrestricted contractor for thirteen years and an owner for seventeen years. This was a, the appointment to the parent member. And the last one is Trent Resendes, carpeting cabinet making. Mr. Resendes is a current tenth grade student in carpeting program. He's looking to be an active advisory board member to contribute to his knowledge and input as a student. Mr. Resendes is seeking appointment to the advisory board as a student member. The recommendation is to appoint Madison Pereira, Rachel Resendes, and Trent Resendes as advisory board members of carpeting cabinet making program for a term of three years.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes. I presume that's.
Yeah, so, yes, that's all, I would have a very deep interest in Diamond. Next, let's see, student travel, Mr. Bentley? The student travel, we do have several requests assigned to page in front of you. The first one is from the Theater Hot Star Club Advisors, they submitted an after hour student travel request for students to attend tech rehearsal and festival competition held at Attleboro High School. Tech rehearsals on February twenty-fourth from three to six thirty PM. Festival is March first, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five, six thirty to ten o'clock at night. And the recommendation is to approve the after hour student travel request submitted by Theater Hot Club for students, uh, to attend carnival at Attleboro High School and the technical rehearsal, uh, for the times indicated.
Your motion to approve?
To approve.
Need a second? All in favor? I, roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
The second, uh, request is for the Business Professionals of America, BPA Club Advisor, has submitted an overnight student travel request for students to attend the BPA state competition being held in Norwood on March the eighth and March the ninth, twenty twenty-five. The recommendation is to approve the overnight student travel request submitted by the BPA Club Advisor for students to attend the state competition held in Norwood on March eighth and March ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Need a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, roll call.
Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Thank you. The third is from the Dental Assisting Program Instructors, they have submitted an out of state travel student request for students to go to Pearson Testing Center in Warwick, Rhode Island on March fourteenth from six thirty AM until five o'clock, uh, PM uh, for the RHS board exam. The recommendation is to approve the out of state travel student request submitted by Dental Assisting Program Instructors for students to go to the Pearson Testing Center in Warwick, Rhode Island on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, from six thirty AM until five PM for the RHS board exam.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Uh, the next request is from Building and Property Maintenance Instructors, they've submitted an out of state travel request for students to attend the annual builders, building materials, and building process trade show. It's hosted at the Rhode Island Convention Cent- Center in Providence, Rhode Island, March the twenty-eighth from eight AM until two PM. The recommendation is to approve the out of state student travel request submitted by Building and Property Maintenance Instructors for students to attend the annual builders, building materials, and building process trade show. It is hosted at the Rhode Island Convention Center, Providence, Rhode Island, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, eight AM to two PM.
Need a motion to approve?
To approve.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Thank you. And the next one is from the HVAC program instructors, submitted an out of state travel request for students to attend the annual builders, building materials, and building process trade show. We can just run about there, it's hosted at Rhode Island Convention Center, Providence, Rhode Island, March twenty-eighth, eight AM to two PM. And the recommendation is to approve the out of state student travel request submitted by the HVAC program instructors for students to attend the annual builders, building materials, and building process trade show. It's hosted at Rhode Island Convention Center, Providence, Rhode Island, March the twenty-eighth, eight AM to two PM.
Motion to approve?
Need a second?
All in favor? Roll call.
Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Uh, do we have a use of facilities? We do have a request of Diamond Football Coach has submitted a request to use the gymnasium for the annual dodgeball tournament to be held on Friday, March the fourteenth from five thirty PM to eight thirty PM, and to waive all use of facility fees. The recommendation is to approve the use of facilities request submitted by the Diamond Football Coach to use the gymnasium for the annual dodgeball tournament to be held on Friday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, five thirty PM to eight thirty PM, and to waive all use of facility fees.
Need a motion to approve?
To approve.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan? Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
The Department of School Committee are welcome to participate in that, too.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I guess.
With the faculty?
Is that a commentary? Okay, so the next one is Diamond Special Education Power Advisory Council, CPAC, otherwise known as, has submitted a request to use a classroom for a meeting with the school principal and the director of special education to be held on Thursday, March twenty-seventh, five thirty to seven thirty, and to waive all use of facility fees. And the recommendation is to approve the use of facilities request submitted by Diamond CPAC to use it in a meeting with the director of special education, to be held on Thursday, March twenty-two, five thirty PM, seven thirty PM, and waive all use of facility fees.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second? All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
We have another high request, the North Hall River Congregation of Jukeable Witnesses has submitted a request to use the auditorium on Saturday, April twelfth from five forty-five PM to eight forty-five PM for their annual religious celebration. There is a fee scheduled, uh, that is set on paper that you see it. Auditorium, the custodial, and the security being associated with this. And, uh, the recommendation is to approve the request submitted by the North Hall River Congregation of Jukeable Witnesses to use the auditorium Saturday, April twelfth. Thousand eighty-two cents.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Then, uh, E, we have acceptance, yes?
We do. Uh, so City Record Supply Company of Fall River, donated three thousand dollars worth of material and the recommendation is to accept it, should three thousand worth of material made by City Record Supply Company of Fall River to the RGA.
Need a second? All in favor?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
The manual?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Thank you. We have a second one, uh, ICM Mechanical and Control has donated a thousand dollars to Diamond's BPA chapter to be used at this. The recommendation is to accept that donation of a thousand dollars made by ICM Mechanical and Control chapter to be used at the discretion of the BPA, advisor to state and national competitions.
Need a motion to accept?
To approve.
Need a second? All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
And our next and last donation is from Mr. Tony Resendes. He's donated thirty-five, yeah, safety glasses for the estimated value of approximately one hundred dollars for students in the advanced manufacturing program. The recommendation is to accept the donation of thirty-five safety glasses with an estimated value of one hundred dollars made by Tony Resendes for the students in the advanced manufacturing program.
Need a motion to accept? Need a second? A second? All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
All right, so moving on to F revised MCAS competency determination, Mr. Bentley?
Yes, just as a lead in before I let this, like I said, explain in detail, uh, is that the MCAS requirement in Massachusetts is no longer a requirement for graduation, but yet the Department of Education has established that there still needs to be some determination of competency for students who do graduate from high school. Administrative team has met here at Diamond Regional, and they have come up with a plan that is included in your packet. Under that front sheet, you should see, uh, that does indicate, that indicates not only what the competency determination would look like, but also the, uh, graduation requirements with the part of, I'll turn that over to Mrs. Blackison for the explanation.
Good, thank you, Mr. Bentley. So in addition to, um, what we collaborated on, we also took information that was shared through the Massachusetts Association. We've got vocational administrators through superintendent's group, the principals group, the academic directors group, really to see what our sister schools, vocational schools were doing. And we're pretty much in align with that, with the new graduation requirements that came through the other day. Um, uh, came through early in the year, which you, um, approved. But what, we could break it down to what will we do with our two years, what will we do with our past graduates? What will we do in the, the future, and maybe await reports that the other? Whole entire council to really look at, to standardize graduation requirements along the state. I know some of the teachers that sat on the education webinar the other night, they talked about different solutions. But we did what we, what uncovered practices.
So, uh, with that being said, we know that there's going to be further determination from the state of Massachusetts, Department of Education, on what should be done. But our current, uh, information that we have is what are we doing with class of twenty-five, the class of twenty-six, and the class of twenty-seven, which is the next one to be tested next month. They are going to be taking MCAS.
Oh, yeah.
Again, they are going to be taking it because the MCAS can be used as one of the determiners of competency. Uh, but we are looking at taking, we're looking at what is best for Diamond students and what really fits the model that we have. We did simulate, uh, material from, had to have been at least twelve, fifteen different districts on what they're doing. And we took what we believe is good for the classes of twenty-five and twenty-six here at Diamond Regional. We know something's coming up for the class of twenty-seven, we know it's coming down with Mike. Uh, the recommendation now is to approve the revised MCAS competency determination as submitted under credit.
All right, um, need a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Each vision, uh, vision of, uh, graduation update. The vision of the graduate, uh, Mr. Chairman, so I'll just quickly go in further because this is what I said, it's the element's job on this one. Uh, and in line with the NEASC, uh, one of the things we also had to do was to look at the vision of the graduate. Basically asked if assuming a Diamond Regional is graduating from Diamond Regional, what does that look like? Uh, based upon that very baseline question, this is why I said assemble the team and I will let her explain what it's like.
So on the team, um, I put it out to pretty much anyone, parents, students, faculty, staff, advisory board uh, members as well, and we have a very diverse group of about thirty-two people. Uh, we had a little bit of lower attendance, it was pretty cold, it was during the cold spell. Um, but we have, uh, really sat around and talked, we, Deposcom gave a presentation about what MEAS is recommending and how that school's core mission and values is rotates around what the vision of the graduate was. So some of the examples that she brought back from her, or the work that that team did was taking the letters of the names, so we're using Bengal, B-E-N-G-A-L, um, and really defining what are the adjectives, what are the words that really describe a Diamond graduate? And with that, we want to bring that back, and how do we apply that to everything that the students encounter while they're here? Um, so we have, uh, some subgroups that are working to kind of come up with the adjectives and the descriptors. In addition to that, we started, um, a great conversation about what is some of the finished products? So you heard our student representative say about the trade, bringing back the trade fair. Um, there were some discussions about offering different electives, you know, for students that may take a, a non-traditional grad path when they graduate. There was some discussion of portfolios and Brad Cooks, which of course I like. But I think that's where the, the meat and potatoes come, once we figure out what that looks like, is to bring that back in-house and say, what does this mean for each individual department? And how are we going to apply it to, how we speak to the kids about raising the bar? How we apply it to how we create them? Uh, what are the expectations to be a student here? So I think there's some good collaboration that's happening. We're only one meeting in, so stay tuned as we have those meetings available.
There is, there is no recommendation to make, this is mostly information, and of course you can ask questions.
Question?
Comment? Sorry. It's interesting seeing some of the other schools. All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, we have the DECA Club co-advisor. Yes, uh, the DECA Club advisor did inform me that he has the largest membership he has had. Uh, he has one hundred and fifty-eight members. I know that some of you were involved in the judging of the state conference that just occurred. Uh, and for the example of the number of students that are interested in that club, uh, and the fact that he reached out saying that it's time where he needs somebody to assist him. Okay, under the teacher's contract, it does call that any time a club is over twenty, uh, then there can be another person added on. And the language is in there. Um, and that my, right, and you see his letter of request to me, his email request to me. And I can't say the years that he has been doing it solo, he's done a very good job, but the club is now becoming full to twenty, of students where they need another person to go to within this group. Not just one person. Could he be absent, what happens? So two people certainly lights it's load. So the recommendation is to approve a co-advisor for the DECA Club, uh, for the DTA conference.
Need a motion to approve?
To approve.
Need a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. A roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
I had one quick question, I apologize, I didn't ask it before you started the vote, but I thought they already had a co-advisor to the DECA.
No, they do not, Mr. DiBiaseu. Uh, we've had a number of people who have stepped up to help him, uh, but there is no official co-advisor or a second person that he can, uh, turn material over to and work with him.
Okay. All right, then, yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Moving on to, uh, I, shop please.
Yes, the exploratory program just concluded. Yes, the exploratory program just concluded, and our 385 freshman students were recently placed into the shops. As I know the committee has an interest on students' choices for shop for the interest of that. Ms. Griffin is here tonight to review the exploratory process and procedures, if needed, the rubric involved, and any other questions that you may have that she can answer. The print is tiny, the information is valuable. But I'll let Ms. Griffin do that. Ms. Griffin?
Thank you. How are you guys today?
Very good.
So, you have the data already on this, and I apologize for it being so small. We're just trying to get it all on one sheet of paper for you. So, as far as the exploratory process of placement of students, it did not change from last year. So, what I'd like to point this to is we've all at one point have tried to pick a March Madness bracket, nearly impossible. This is actually mathematically less possible than picking a perfect bracket to have 385 students picking 386 seats and everybody getting something that they want. So, I'm here, the numbers represent in these first six columns, the students' choices one through six, along with total requests in the blue, red, and green. So, for the F, it's female, M is male, N slash U is non-binary, and the yellow column is the total amount of students that requested each shop. The following column after that is the number of students that went and explored the shop. So, again, the students were able to pick three shops that they definitely were able to explore, and then were randomly placed into nine shops. So, that did leave each student not able to explore six shops. And then, following that is the percentage of students who both explored and requested the shop. Important to note on this, out of the 385 students that we had go through exploratory, there was a 93% placement rate on the students. There were 27 students who unfortunately did not receive one of their top six picks. So, what I did for those 27 students is I sent each student and family an email to notify them that unfortunately they didn't receive a pick and that they would be receiving a phone call from myself. So, I went through each of those students based upon points, and I offered them the shops that we had available. After that, each student went to shop for a cycle, and then went to academics for a cycle, and then we issued a shop change form. So, I think it's important to note, out of those 27 students who didn't get anything, only 16 of them submitted a shop change form. So, that means there were a good amount of students who were satisfied with the shop they ended up with, even if they didn't pick it. So, as of today, we have a 97% shop placement of satisfied customers. And then, also, you have a packet here. I think it's more important to know, based on percentage, all of our shops have increased from last year of student requesting. So, I think that the work that's being done by the exploratory teachers at this point is invaluable, and they really put in a good effort to make sure that students are being educated properly to make an informed decision about vocational education.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, Mr. DiBiaseu, best.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First of all, kudos to you guys. I like the process that you're doing now by calling them and offering them, not just assigning. That is awesome. My question to you is, did we have anybody to leave and go back to their sending schools because they did not get the shop they wanted?
That's an excellent question. So, at this time, I did have one student sign out prior to the shop change form going out. So, that student attended. I'm actually not even sure that the student made it to shop. So, this particular student said that it was too much for her, the overall experience of Diamond as far as going from vocations for 10 days to academics for 10 days, back to the vocations. So, they identified that that wasn't a good fit for them. And then, I was just notified today that we are having a second student sign out. But this student is also a unique situation because they ended up in their first shop pick and then put in for a shop change, or granted a shop change to another pick and are still not satisfied. So...
All right, that's awesome. I'm glad you're really working with the kids because that's the important thing, because we hadn't in the past. The other question I had is, on the rubic, how we come up with the scores. I'd like to speak with you about that at another time. But I really believe that rubic should be changed just a tad. Number one, if a student has a bad experience in a shop, and they're getting a low grade, then, because maybe they just had their nails done, now they're in auto mechanics, I don't know. Or they were out two of the three days, and they got a poor grade because they were out sick. I know they can't mark them off for being sick, but it happens. So, I'd like to see if we can change that rubic to delete the bottom score that these students are getting. So, if they had a bad experience, or they had a bad day, that they don't lose their choice of shop because of that one bad experience.
So, that's great feedback. My plan is, after February break, I would like to assemble a team. An invitation will go out to all of the vocational teachers, and I'm looking toward assembling a team of teachers. I'm hoping that mostly exploratory teachers will be interested in participating, because I would like to review the exploratory process as a whole, to see what sort of improvements we can make to make sure that all of the students, along with the faculty members, are having a positive and equitable experience.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Well done, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to G, monthly faculty report.
There are only a few negative areas. Later this evening, you'll see a request for transfers out of our substitute count. Page 81, two thirds of the way down, number 23, 25, we started off with $200,000. We have a cost of $40,000 left for the remainder of the substitute pay. So, requesting a transfer of funds. The other negative balances are page two, the psych services, and the extraordinary account. Those are primarily due to conferences, psych services. Those are the only ones. We discussed in September of the rate, the last couple of years, we've always set a passive rate, and that's the one.
All right, any questions? All right, moving on to K, expenditures.
Expenditures, there are the MSBA expenditures. There's also an additional one for the MSBA, which is engineering, which carried over the last cost of $85,850, which is $1,850. Transfers for the after-school, which get a $240 grant, $18,000, Skills USA for pickup for the economic competition, business professionals for their state competition, $13.6. And we have a bid that we put out, the skills capital grant for metal fabs for $143,863.8 cents. DECA again for their state competition, $18,600.
Need a motion to approve the expenditures presented? Need a second? All in favor? Aye. Need a roll call?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan? Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Transfer of funds.
Summary memo there is there's a request for $150,000 to be transferred from teacher salaries and medical dental insurance to daily subs. Within the other accounts, they're coming from supplies to textbooks for dental. They're coming from supply of tech to equipment, auto tech, coming from structural hardware program web to equipment for program web, and then FNA equipment to go to technology supplies. Total sum is $173,700.
All right, need a motion to approve the transfer? Need a second? All in favor? Aye. Need a roll call?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
All right, moving on to M, surplus of equipment, Mr. Kitchen?
Another number of items that we're trying to address, like clearing out some of the bill, the health assessing, the disposals, tables. There are a list of textbooks, history, English, math. AT has a list of homebooks and laptops, obsolete. And then, there are items that we are auctioning. So, auto tech is launching six of the lifts. Metal fab is an opera press. Cochrantry is in the Northfield planar. Drafting, had some drafting, small drafting, manual units. Electronics has two sets of oscilloscopes. And then, facilities department, we have some tables and chairs that were in the back area of 251 that were placing students, tech area tables.
All right, I need a motion to approve the surplus. Need a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
One quick question. Can we take that website and put it on the Diamonds page if it's not there already? I do have people ask me about this, and I have no idea what the website is for these people to bid on this stuff. So, if we can put it on the Diamond page, that way I can just say, go to the Diamond page. So, that would be helpful, Paul.
That'd be fine. We have another auction in the spring.
All right, thank you. And yes to that.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
All right, moving on to N, middle one, Mr. Kitchen?
We did do the bid for Lincoln 300C welders. I believe there were 14?
Nine.
Nine? Nine. We had two bids, one from Wellmark and one from toll welding. The little bidder was Wellmark for $143,863.08.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second? All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
All right, moving on to, oh, super talent director report. I'll make this fairly quick as we have something standing to here. First, on the enrollment, the enrollment remains very strong as of February the 5th. There is a chart that I have included within your material. I'll call it the enrollment report, and it shows the breakdown by grade, by city and town, and the total number of students, which as we sit here today is 1,465 students. We're in the exploratory placement report from Ms. Griffin, so there's absolutely nothing else that I need to add to that. The admissions report, as of February the 5th, there were 810 applications that have been received for the class of 28, 29 that is up significantly from last year. The selection and notification process will begin, I've just been informed today that it will actually begin the last week in February, February the 5th. That's when notices will be sent out. If you're looking for the admissions report, who applied for what, there's a table in your packet that shows again the city and the town, and the number of applications that were sent in from each area. The lock report remains extremely strong, 198 seniors, 25 juniors, 223 students. And again, a chart is broken down to you, which shows you the number of students by program, not where they're working, but the number who are working. And I spoke now seniors and juniors, as I'll be reporting. You have a couple of other papers in there of upcoming material. The last is going on the backside of my report. Is the LPN report. I have some good news that I hope to be brought out. The LPN class currently is meeting with 15 students. They have students that have already been accepted for next year. A T's testing schedule is there, one coming up the end of the month. We had one informational session snowed out. They had a successful one just the other day at the LPN building. And we have an open house that's also going to be going out very shortly. You have to get rescheduled because of the snowstorm. That wasn't a snowstorm, canceled everything out. I do want to let you know that today, by email, myself and Barbara Pater, who appeared before the Board of Registration of Nursing, and we have crossed that hurdle. They did accept the program, submitted evidence that we do in fact have a currently, Barbara Pater is considered to be a full-time person, although she's only working a maximum, maximum hours per week. They accepted that. The evidence is sufficient to meet with compliance, and that the only thing they want to know is what is the progress of looking for a permanent program administrator, which I'm happy to report that we have had applications in. I'll be looking to schedule some appointments, scheduling interviews of the candidates in order to for selection. The last thing I want to make the committee aware of is on March 13, the Food Science Club, which you all went to last year. We had a very interesting taste of different styles of food and how it was prepared. That is coming up on March 15. Same now as a school committee meeting. We'll see if we can maybe squeeze something in if it's possible. That is my report. Any questions or comments? Moving on going to P, calendar events. We have acceptance student night Tuesday, April 8, at 6 o'clock. Our next scheduled school committee meeting is scheduled for the 10th, but that night is the state OBS award. So, I have a date of the following week, would be August 17. So, everybody can just check their calendars, see what 17th, April, what did I say?
August.
August.
April 17.
April 17. All right. We can go over next month when we need to.
Yeah.
Moving on to Q. Reasonably accepted for eight hours, we do have one. Mr. Chairman, we do have one because this confirmation was only received today. The dental assisting instructors have submitted an after-hours student travel request for students to take the infection control exam, otherwise known as ICE, in Wellesley, Massachusetts on March 13, 2025, from 2:45 PM until 8:45 PM. And the recommendation is to approve the after-hours student travel request submitted by the dental assisting instructors, for students to take the ICB closely masked on March 13. And again, apologize for this coming in at this time, but only this afternoon, they were assigned their exam time. We don't get to pick it, we get assigned it, and they assign us those times. All right, need a motion to approve?
Some votes.
Need a second? All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.
Okay, our next school committee meeting is set for March 13, but just want to let you know that if negotiations are needed, I will call a special school committee meeting. So, we'll leave that. Mr. Bentley can notify us?
Yes, thank you.
All right, we have no correspondence. So, I need a motion to adjourn.
Some votes.
Need a second? All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. DiBiaseu?
Yes.
Attorney Flanagan? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Menard?
Yes.